Okay. Now that council is in, we will commence the March 3rd West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Accessory Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority Meeting. We will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Yolo County Supervisor, Gary Sandy.
Thank you. If you're able to stand, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. On the count of three, one, two, three, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor.
Thank you.
We will proceed next to the, well, pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via Zoom to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or wave cable. We will have live public comment and we will continue to receive public comments. And all comments that have been received by this afternoon have been provided to City Council and posted on the website. To provide live public comment during the meeting, join the meeting using the Zoom meeting link hyperlinked or the phone number listed on the city's website on the city's council's agenda. I'll request public comment during Item 1A prior to the first item on consent and after staff presentation for any other item on the agenda. Once I've announced the public comment period, if you would like to make a comment, please do one of the following. If you are joining the meeting via Zoom, press the raise hand button, or if you are joining the meeting by phone, press star nine when it is your turn to comment. The clerk will call you by name or phone number and will unmute your microphone. Each person will be allowed three minutes. The clerk will notify you when you have, when you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. And once you're three minutes or your public comment has ended, you will be muted again. So you can join by phone dialing 1-669-900-9128. ID is 920-95642935 and passcode is 004264. We met in closed session and Mr. Mitchell, can you share with us the council actions taken today?
Absolutely. The council did meet in closed session to confer with their legal counsel concerning a, an existing piece of litigation. In that particular matter, there was a settlement that was approved by the council unanimously. The, a summary of the terms of that settlement are, this was in the case of City of West Sacramento versus R and B property, our business management. The terms included a judgment entered against the defendants on all of the city's claims. The defendants will reimburse the city for past response costs in the sum of $125,627.90. The defendants will complete investigation of site contamination, including tasks ordered by the California Department of Toxic Substances Control. The defendants further agreed to remediate the property and obtain regulatory closure. However, funding for the remediation is dependent on the city prevailing on the issue of insurance coverage, which still has to be litigated. And the defendants will be required to reimburse the city for litigation costs and future response costs, again contingent on the city prevailing on the insurance coverage issue. The other closed session items included a conference with labor negotiator concerning the West Sacramento Police Officers Association and the West Sac Police Managers Association, and a conference with the city's real property negotiator concerning the property identified in the agenda. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. And next item on the agenda is Item 1A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda, and council members are prohibited from discussion on any matter presented under this item. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or live public comment request?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. Mayor Guerrero, we did not receive any written comments for 1A, but there were speakers. Right now, I will call on Tiffany first.
Thank you so much. This evening, I will be reading a letter on behalf of Pat Plin as she was unable to attend this evening. Pat writes, "I see that the Police Officer Association contract was discussed in closed session. My hope is that you negotiated everything they asked for, plus I am truly concerned for community safety and the safety of our officers. It is your responsibility to hire a permanent police chief. These officers put themselves on the line every day for the citizens of West Sacramento. This year has been an unusually busy year for our officers. As you know, over 50% of our officers have less than five years of experience because of your previous actions. You failed to give pay raises for four years. You took away benefits. You failed to give the police officers the support and incentives to stay on. The agreement of two or so years ago failed to bring them up to standards offered by cities in our region. They would have needed a 16.8% raise then to get to the average pay for the area. You offered them 1%. We were and are having a hard time attracting qualified police applicants. We are still losing our seasoned officers. Our crime has increased. Did we hire our outreach and mental health personnel to help combat these issues? Or were current personnel positions just moved into these new funding sources? You, the city council, are charged with keeping our community safe. Our police officers' pay and benefits need to be brought up to fair and competitive levels. We, as citizens, deserve high caliber officers. The citizens of West Sac deserve... The citizens of West Sac deserve to live in a safe community. Up-to-date equipment and well-staffed police force is essential. As I am not privy to the negotiation conversations, my hope is that you negotiated in good faith for our officers and community. If not, shame on you." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maria.
Hi. My name is Maria Gralvuk. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Can you hear me? I hope you can. Thank you. I, the reason I wanted to comment is that I wanted to actually introduce the concept of having the mayorship be a four-year position instead of a two-year position. Right near, right now, as you, we all know, we have a two-year mayorship. And I wanted to introduce the concept of having a four-year mayorship. And that is the reason that I am commenting today. But because this contract is up, I am sure that if the city had the resources, we would give our first responders all the pay increases that we could, if we had the resources, I am sure. But I'm sure that we don't have the resources, and that's why I'm sure we don't give our first responders the resource, the more pay increases. To me, what's more important is that we had another death the other day of mental health crisis, and, and, and somebody's brain got blown up. That's a bigger, bigger crisis to me. And so, anyway, I think Rob Strange should be permanent and that he get the training necessary so that he can be able to hire somebody that can deal with mental health crisis. Bob Coleman was a mental health crisis. He ended up dying. Now this young man had a mental health crisis. He ended up dying. And so, yeah, I'd love to give our first responders tons of money. If our city resources had it, I'm sure the reason we don't is because we don't have the resources. Anyway, so please consider having a four-year mayorship because that's what our city deserves. And thank you so much for this opportunity to speak today, tonight.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Danny.
Hello. My name is Danny Theracol. I just wanted to comment quickly on our vaccine situation here. So I'm very lucky enough to have gone and gotten my first dose of the Pfizer vaccine because the Yolo County has just opened up eligibility to food service workers. So I was very fortunate and lucky enough to get a spot while there were some. But after hearing some comments by some community members on social media, many people are, who were eligible for the first round of the vaccine, still aren't getting them. And I just wanted to come here and, you know, request that, you know, you, our city leaders or our city staff can do something to help mitigate that, you know? It, it's, you know, it's so wrong that, you know, so many people still aren't getting the vaccine even though they were eligible from the beginning. And so, you know, if there's anything that you all can do, it would be really appreciated. You know, I myself have seen at least two different ways for people to sign up to be on the waitlist. I'm sure there's even a third I'm not even looking at. You know, something to mainstream the communication. You are our city leaders. We hope that you can be our strongest advocate to the county and our county services so that way we can get as many people who want the vaccine in, in West Sacramento to get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that concludes our public comment section. Next is Item 1B, council communications from our assignments. And is there any communication from our council members? Council member Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, actually I have a, a report on the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency. And we met, the board met on February 18th and took up the following matters. They approved a contract amendment for environmental services for the federal projects, the Yolo Bypass East Levy Project. They approved a program for public information that supports the agency's public outreach efforts and expands contribution under the NFIP Community Rating System. We also received updates on efforts to secure advanced mitigation credit for the resource agencies, CDFW, USFW, NMFS, for the flood plain restoration habitat created by the Southport Project. There's a 100% design deliverable for the next increment of the federal project, Y-Bell, on schedule to be completed in March. Sequel expected to be complete and certified in April. The project will be ready to construct once new start funding received, is received by the Corps. We're looking to secure a construction new start and funding in fiscal year '22 through the President's '22 Budget Infrastructure, Infrastructure Stimulus Recovery Bill, Army Corps '22 Work Plan. And we also have had Congresswoman Matt Sui send a letter to the Office, to the OMB, to support all the above options for the new start funding. And I want to thank Greg Faben, who also attends these meetings with me, for helping me report out. Also, I will be attending the Yolo Salon Air Quality Management Board Meeting on March 10th. And I also attended the Two by Two with the city and Washington by the School District with Mayor Guerrero. And I will let you report out on that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. Any other reports? Yes, Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, on February 24th, 2021, the Yolo County Housing Authority met and discussed a variety of agenda items specifically. They received a presentation by the Yolo County Housing General Director on COVID response update. In addition, received a presentation by Yolo County Housing Fiscal Director, at least a partial presentation, on the financial framework for the organization. In addition, I do have some good news to report that the authority was proud to announce that there, there had been a problem with the lack of contact with many of the voucher participants. Apparently, there are 1,500 Housing Choice vouchers out and normally, you know, there are events and opportunities to bring folks together. However, given current guidelines, they, we haven't had the opportunity to make contact with some of the recipients and/or find out what their needs are at this juncture. But luckily, there was a client services team created a program, I believe it's called Raven, I could be wrong, but essentially, two interns from Sac State took it upon themselves to check in with each of the residents and, and do an inventory to find out what needs are not being met and to find a way so that way we can meet contact and ensure that, that those problems are ameliorated. And so I believe that they sent letters and followed up with phone calls, which was wonderful because as we know, many of these folks are some of the hardest hit and most vulnerable. So it's good to see that this organization is doing really great work. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. No other updates? Okay. I'll move into my report.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Totally, I do have one.
Go ahead.
Need our city attorney and the port attorney help. But just earlier this evening, the Port Commission met in closed session. Just one item was with a real property negotiator. And I think if the city manager, Port CEO, is there anything we need to report out on that?
No.
No action was taken. Yeah. Thank you. So yeah, that was the only item we had tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, for telling us. I appreciate the update. Okay. See no other updates. SACOG Board convened February 14th, and we approved the Transportation Development Act claims for, which included the City of West Sacramento for 3.4 million for a number of transit needs, which includes 1.2 million per via. And we also approved the Transit Representation and Metropolitan Planning Organization structure, and structure. We also approved the 2021-2024 Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program Amendment Number One to the 2020 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, Sustainable Community Strategy, and Air Quality Conformity Analysis. And we approved received the unmet transit needs findings of the Sacramento Regional Transit, which also includes Yolo bus. And we approved the support for the Caltrans statewide safety performance management targets. In addition, we received an update on federal and state advocacy efforts, which is on the horizon at the federal level. 2021 will be an active year for many issues of relevance to SACOG and will provide many opportunities for SACOG to engage, which includes the Fixing of America's Surface Transportation Act, which is the FAST Act, which will expire at the end of the federal fiscal year on 2021 September. The FAST Act is a funding and authorization measure for surface transportation infrastructure planning and investment. And SACOG is also working with the state and federal elected officials to identify potential funding opportunities for the Infill Development Cooperative Green Means Go, focusing on the need for major infrastructure improvements throughout our region to help facilitate infill development, including water sewer and drainage projects. AB 1209 is authored by Assembly Member Kevin McCarty, which establishes a Green Means Go grant and loan program. So hopefully, we'll get a chance to review that in a future council meeting. And on February 18th, the Two by Two met, and we had an update received by the superintendent regarding the back-to-school, you know, return opening, but it wasn't really a full update. That's still a work in progress, as we can see. And also Liberty Development provided an update on their project and what they'd like to accomplish with the school. And Ms. Michael also made a request to continue to work with the school for our summer programs. So we're looking to see what we can accomplish for summer programs for our community. And on February 19th, West Sacramento hosted the Legal City Sacramento Valley Division Board Meeting and appreciated that we had Councilmember Alcala, Councilmember Roscoe join me for that. It was well-attended, about 50-plus members of our region participated. And our very knowledgeable and experienced city manager, Aaron Loyal, provided a presentation on initiatives in West Sacramento, which included what we've accomplished under COVID and also Project Home Key. And we also received state budget updates and information from Assembly Member Aggyar Curry on her broadband bill, which is AB 14, which provides a subsidy to fund broadband infrastructure. And we're going to take a look at what other options we have to get broadband infrastructure funded here in West Sacramento, so that'll be another update that I understand we'll, we'll receive in the future. And that concludes, I think, everybody's report. Next is our consent agenda, and I understand we have a few speakers here, special representatives here for item number six, so I'll be pulling that. Are there any other items we need to pull? Hearing none. We'll just continue then to have item number six. And I think we will go to public comment for the speakers at this point, unless there is a presentation by city staff at this. Okay, sorry. We'll go to council members first. And Councilmember Roscoe, you would like to speak?
I would. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I stand in support with item six for a variety of different reasons. We don't have to look far to see that the history of our country has been rooted in a variety of racist acts, whether it be African Americans, or Latino Americans, or Asian Americans, and even Native Americans. We have, unfortunately, we've made great strides and we have cause to be very proud of the progress that we've made. However, we still have yet to go, far to go, and more work to do. Recent events, on January 28th, for example, the attack on an 84-year-old victim, Visha Rana Pakdi, which led to his death two days later. One of several acts against Asian-American elders across the United States, including 64-year-old Vietnamese grandmother who was robbed and assaulted in San Jose. 61-year-old Filipino man who was slashed in the face with a box cutter on the New York City subway, and a 91-year-old man who was thrown to the ground in Oakland just recently. And, you know, when this item came up and, and I was, you know, talking to some of our constituents about it, you know, some, some said, you know, "That doesn't sound like us, though. That's not us. That's not us West Sacramento, right?" And I, I would say that I admired the hope in that comment. But I think we would all be doing ourselves a disservice if we were to ignore the reality that unfortunately, it's everywhere, including in our great city. In January, I was called to the home of a resident of West Sacramento, a good friend, actually Filipino mother of two, who's raising her children right alongside mine, and who provides childcare for my boys on occasion while I work. She had enjoyed a trip to our Target Southport Town Center, and she was along with her nine-year-old son, who is a good friend of my son Mateo. And as they were returning to their car, she and her son were verbally attacked by a woman who yelled, quote, "Get out of here, chink. Get out of my country." And by the time I had made contact with her, she, she wasn't, she was actually still in tears, and she explained to me the surprise and the hurt and humiliation that she suffered as she absorbed the hatred that this person emanated with her words. And, and she was even sadder, given the fact that her nine-year-old had to witness this. And, you know, we don't have to go through all of the different, you know, events that have happened here in Sacramento. It's because it's just really hardly, it's hardly surprising that, given the, you know, given the racist rhetoric that has referenced COVID as China virus and blaming our country, or excuse me, blaming another country, China, for the pandemic. I think since the start of the pandemic last spring, Asian-Americans have faced racial violence at a much higher rate. And as noted in the staff report in the proclamation, it's higher than in previous years. And in some cities, hate crimes motivated by anti-Asian sentiment has jumped over 1,900% and it continues in 2021. This has led President Biden to sign the executive order denouncing anti-Asian, Asian-American discrimination, shortly after he took office in January. We're here tonight to do our part to eliminate these harmful narratives and that, those narratives that divide us from one another and pit our communities against each other. And I'm proud to see the efforts of regional leaders across the Sacramento region, including Yolo County Board of Supervisors, Woodland City Council, Davis City Council, Sacramento City Council, which will be hearing the item, I believe, on Tuesday. And from the leadership of my good friend across the river, newly-elected Councilmember Mayveng, who stood forth in condemning anti-hate and discrimination and calling for all of us to do the same. This issue obviously affects all of our community, and we need to work together to find solutions. As we mentioned in our last council meeting, when we talked about the, the resolution for compassionate West Sacramento, that we can work on these problems and these issues together because ignoring them only allows a continuance of further suffering and denies us our own humanity. I'll close by just saying that my late father, Mario Roscoe, he was born in Mexicali, and he met my mother, who was a daughter of Girino Carino Villanueva, and he was a man who immigrated from, to the United States, from the Philippines in 1928, to work in the sugarcane fields. And I still recall the story that my grandmother, his wife and my grandmother, Donna, shared with me about a time when the two of them had stopped at a restaurant along the highway with a newborn baby, and that they waited for over 20 minutes to receive service, thinking that, you know, there was an innocent explanation, only to find that each time the service person walked past, it was actually purposeful. And so when they finally did hail someone to ask if they could order beverages, they were told, "We don't serve dogs here." And they were referencing my Filipino grandfather. And that was a long time ago. And it, it just, I reference it because a lot, some, in some people's minds, that hasn't changed. And neither my father or my grandfather would live to see the day when their daughter and granddaughter would be sworn in as a First Filipina and Asian-American Pacific Islander Council Member in the City of West Sacramento. And so I'm, I'm proud to have asked for this item to be brought before us tonight, but I'm even prouder to have learned that at least one other of my colleagues had also made the request to stand in solidarity against hatred and xenophobia. And for that support, I expect this resolution to receive. I, I'm really proud to sit with this council tonight. I also will say that I've been informed by Yolo County Supervisor Oscar Viega Sat. There'll be an upcoming countywide event to address this issue, and I look forward to both participating and inviting my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. We, we do have a couple of requests to speak. They were invited, not invited because I let them know, and also they requested this to be, and I did, I do want them to be put on, if there's a camera, we can put them on the camera, Madam Clerk, and they're Lisa and Supervisor Sandy, so we can see them on the camera. And I would like to read the resolution as well to them. And let's see. Thank you Supervisor Sandy. And Lisa, is your camera on? Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. So I'm just going to, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, if you don't mind, and then ask you to speak. And this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Sacramento condemning and combating racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, whereas West Sacramento supports inclusion and belonging for people of all races, national origins, and ethnicities, which is critical to guaranteeing the safety and security of all people. And whereas, since the COVID-19 pandemic began, inflammatory and xenophobic rhetoric has put Asian-American and Pacific Islander persons, families, communities, and businesses at risk. And whereas, the City of West Sacramento recognizes the statements at the federal level have played a role in furthering these xenophobic sentiments, including references to the COVID-19 pandemic by the geographic location of its origin. And whereas, such statements have promoted unfounded fears and perpetuated stigma about Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, which have contributed to increasing rates of bullying, harassment, and hate crimes against AAPI persons. And whereas, these actions defy the best practices and guidelines of public health officials and have caused significant harm to AAPI families and communities that must be addressed. And whereas, despite these increasing acts of intolerance, Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have made Yolo County and our nation more secure throughout its history and during the COVID-19 pandemic with an estimated 2 million Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders serving on the front lines of this crisis as healthcare providers, as first responders, and in other essential roles. And whereas, the City of West Sacramento... And whereas, the city of West Sacramento and the federal government should combat racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, and should work to ensure that all members of the AAPI communities, no matter their background, the language they speak, or their religious beliefs, are treated with dignity and equity. And whereas President Joseph Biden released a memorandum dated January 26, 21, directing federal agencies to condemn and combat racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of West Sacramento, that the city of West Sacramento, in accordance with the presidential memorandum, thereby condemns racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, accepts responsibility to prevent racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against everyone in the city of West Sacramento, including Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, and calls upon all citizens, city staff, and community groups to assist in the furtherance of these objections, objectives, sorry. And I just wanted to ask Lisa first, you presented this to us, and I'm very grateful for you doing that. This means a lot to our city that you stood up courageously and are fighting xenophobic behavior because of your own personal experience. Just wanted to give you some time to speak about this now.
Honorable City Council of West Sacramento, thank you so much for bringing this on the agenda. I'm sorry to have to speak today. Before COVID-19, I had very rarely any racial problems in Yolo County, and I've lived here for over 25 years. And then when COVID-19 hit, I was attacked by racists six separate times, in English and Spanish. All of them had racial slangs and swear words and blaming me personally for COVID-19, but the hardest were the physical assaults. And fortunately for me, I was at the grocery store in the parking lot, so I was able, I'm a grandma, and I was able to shield myself with the grocery cart and use it as a lunging spear so that I could escape and not harm the other person. And I would not want any of that experience to happen to anyone else, particularly in West Sacramento. And as I've shared my story, more victims have come to my attention, and they have come to talk to me just so we could comfort each other. And that includes two different families in West Sacramento. But the story that really broke my heart was when Asian mother had shared that it affected her child so much that her child said, "I wish I wasn't born Asian," because of all the harassment. And I don't know if you've read Toni Morrison, but one of her first famous books was Blue Is Eyes, and it was about a child that wished that they didn't have brown eyes because of the way that they were treated. And that's just the insidiousness of racism when it reaches down to the child, and the child wishes that they weren't worn the color of skin that they were. So I just am so grateful that you are so brave and so wise to put down this hedge of protection around West Sacramento and begin to deal with these violent hate crimes as well as the verbal abuse so that you can continue to build an incredible city, because West Sacramento is amazing and you do so many wonderful things for your residents. Thank you for the time and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Lisa. Supervisor Sandy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for your, appreciate it.
Certainly, it's an honor to be before the West Sacramento City Council tonight. Thank you for the opportunity. Lisa resides in my district, and her and I have had a chance to discuss this issue many times, and it's always disturbing to hear the pain in her voice and the anguish that she went through, just as it was to listen to Councilman Orozco's moving testimony as well. So I know that the West Sacramento City Council can be counted under to the right thing, and I'm certain that you will. I will say that at one point during the testimony before this resolution the other day, West Sacramento School Board Member Jackie Wong called in and related the experiences of her daughter. And if ever there was a heartbreaking moment, it was that one, that unless we step forward, unless we take a stand, we're letting our children down. But our children deserve to grow up in a better world than the one in which we were raised even, and I know that that's a value we all share in common. And to hear the questions that her daughter was posing would just break your heart. And so I know again that you'll do the right thing tonight in stepping forward and taking a bold stand here. And this was reported earlier, my colleague Supervisor Viegas, and some of the other supervisors are already planning a forum for the county so that we can educate ourselves about Asian culture, learn more about the Asian achievements and the manifest contributions they make to our communities and our country and our culture. And so thank you for your time tonight. We're honored by your attention.
Very grateful to have you here tonight, Supervisor Sandy. And Lisa, we're honored to have your presence here, your leadership, and commitment to eradicate these type of activities, this racist behavior here in our community. Thank you. And I believe we have other, and just other requests for public comment at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. We received public comments, written public comments, and there are speakers right now. Let me call in Tiffany, followed by Dante Early.
Hello. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I come to you tonight as a white woman who has never experienced the kind of racist acts that you guys are talking about and that I know our Asian and Pacific Islander communities are experiencing. I know that our Latino-American communities experience and our African-American communities experience. However, I see it, and I know it exists. I know it's real. It impacts people I care about. And I just want to speak and say that I wholeheartedly support the resolution, and I hope that our city council passes the resolution this evening. Thank you.
This is Dr. Early. Should I go?
Yes, go ahead.
This is an area that is actually pretty near and dear to my heart. My little sister was actually born on my high school graduation day. Therefore, from the day she was actually born, she was the center of all of our lives. That's just Dani. She's smart, she's hardworking, she's strong, independent, kind, beautiful, inside and out. And she is just as African-American as she is Filipina. Although the experiences of discrimination are not new to her or her family, it still hurts my heart that anyone would look at her as if she is less than or not see her for the amazing young woman that she is, simply because she is Filipina. Martin Luther King said, "While it may be true that morality cannot be legislated, behavior can be regulated. It may be true that law cannot change the heart, but it can restrain the heartless. It may be true that the law cannot make a man love me, but it can keep him from lynching me, and I think that is pretty important also." So there is a need for executive orders. There is a need for judicial decrees. There is a need for civil rights legislation on local scale, within states, and on the national scale through the federal government. There is a need for this resolution. I want to thank you, West Sacramento City Council and Mayor Guerrero, for adopting this resolution. I hope this is one of many steps you will be taking to condemn and root out all discrimination, racism, xenophobia in our community. I hope that we will continue the hard work of looking at our policies, our procedures, our governance through an equity lens to ensure that no community feels marginalized. It's unfortunate that this resolution is needed, but it is. And I thank you for doing the right thing and addressing and condemning racist behavior against our Asian Pacific Islander community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Hirsch, followed by Dani Thirko.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Alex Hirsch, and I am a resident of West Sacramento. And although I serve on the city's planning commission, I'm speaking tonight simply as a private individual. A private individual who is very concerned about the alarming rise in hate crimes and intolerance against the AAPI community. This wave of anti-Asian racism hits close to my heart, given my own mixed race, Chinese and Jewish heritage. From both sides of my family's history, I know all too well where that dark path of hatred leads. Racism and xenophobia, bigotry and hate, these insidious concepts can twist and darken even the kindest souls if not pushed back. For that reason, I applaud the city of West Sacramento for standing up and saying that there is no place in our community for that hatred. Of course, this resolution is just the first step. I encourage the city to continue being proactive in this space by uplifting our community's minority voices and highlighting minority-owned local businesses and community organizations. To the City Council members supporting this resolution tonight and to Lisa Salinas for being brave and sharing her lived experience, let me close simply by saying thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Dani, go ahead.
Thank you. First and foremost, thank you for bringing this resolution forward. I'm trying to compose my thoughts and hearing all these comments, you know, it brings a tear to my eyes. Man, I do support this resolution. And I do ask that, you know, you pass it, but I also ask that we also take a more active approach as well. Assembly Bill 557 was introduced this year that would create a statewide hotline, hate crimes hotline, toll-free number, as well as establish a way for people to report hate crimes online. If passed, I hope that the city not only just supports the bill, but helps advertise that line and information to our residents as fast as possible. The US Department of Justice estimates that half of all hate crimes are never reported. Half of all hate crimes never reported. I'm 23, I'm young. If it happens to me, I know I can, you know, defend myself, but I think about my parents, my mom and my dad. If they were out in the store and something happened to them, I know that they wouldn't be able to handle that situation the way that I would be able to. There is a culture that people of color just are not supported enough when we try to defend ourselves or bring up issues. And in the Asian Pacific Islander community, it's worse. We have this expectation of being the model minority, and it's just not true. We face discrimination just as much, and it's hard trying to be strong when all this happens. We can do better. We must do better. I hope that this bill passes in the state, and I hope our city gets behind it, and I hope that, you know, we get that information out as fast as possible. If there's another way to get support to our community that's not directly connected to this bill, we should do it. And I hope that we can act together and stop this from happening. I want to end my comments by saying, you know, I am a son, a brother, I'm an uncle, but most importantly, I'm human. I am not a virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dani. Our final speaker is Maria Geralva.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak again. Thank you, Lisa, for bringing this to the attention of everyone, your experiences. And welcome, County Supervisor Sandy. I can't thank our mayor enough for bringing this resolution and for the leadership our mayor has shown. I think this shows more than anything, the big picture that we have to deal with, you know, in light of the summer riots that we had last year and in light of the Capitol riots that we had and in light of the, you know, reckoning that we have. We really have a big, big, big situation in our hands, and what you experienced, Lisa, quite recently is part of that. And so people of color have been living with this for so long, and Gary not just recently put a poem on Facebook that said, "What did I miss? Did I miss something?" You know, and I don't know if he meant it on purpose, but, you know, I took it as him talking about why privileged, and I don't know if he meant it that way or not. Sorry, Gary. But, you know, there was, there's a lot of growing that all of us are going to be doing in the next few years, whether we want to or not. And some people call it cancer culture, others call it a reckoning, and, you know, and all of us are growing whether we want to or not. And so I really love our mayor for being our leader in this, and I sure love being a part of West Sac. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, everybody. Back to you, Mayor Guerrero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight, and I greatly appreciate the partnership with our Yolo County Supervisors, and thank you Supervisor Sandy for joining us this evening. An opportunity where I, you know, wanted you to even present and started us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Our supervisors do provide some very good leadership on many areas, including eradicating discrimination and racism and taking the lead first in the county to, you know, present a resolution. And in addition to that, you know, Lisa is who started this in her gentle prompting and, you know, just presenting her story and, of course, her being your constituent, it is home. And Lisa being a friend and colleague who I've worked with on many areas, supporting our youth, and just being a champion for helping our community overall. And it's been painful to see what has happened to her and hearing the stories. I also have heard from, aside from also our school board trustee Jackie Wong and what happened to her family, it has been very distressful to think that something like this is going on in our community and, you know, to be more actively involved to prevent this from happening, to speak out more clearly about this and say that this is wrong, say that we will not accept it, ask and urge others to speak up against it as well if they see it, and to protect members of our AAPI community if they're out there, to just go out and stand up and protect them. I heard also from our city manager, as we were discussing the resolution, that his children have also been impacted on school grounds early on when COVID was first discussed, you know, when it started off in November. You know, we heard it as the, you know, starting off in Wuhan, China. And that's back then when it started affecting, you know, Aaron and his family. And these type of, you know, this treatment towards the Asian community brings harmful, you know, painful memories to people's lives. It presents questions and it presents just trauma, you know, as to who they are and why it's happening to them. For somebody so young, for our children to be impacted here in our community is just horrible. I'm just, you know, cannot believe this is happening here, but it has. And I am, you know, just very supportive of this resolution to present it to our city council. And I wanted to ask Mayor Potem Ladesma, did you want to speak as well?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. I won't pull on this anymore, but it is an important issue. I appreciate the time. And to the speakers tonight, thank you for chiming in to the public comment. But Supervisor Sandy and certainly Lisa, thank you for your courage in telling your story and bringing awareness to this in our community and our county. To my colleagues who brought this forward, thank you. To my colleagues who brought this forward, thank you. And I am, as you can tell, 100% supportive of this resolution. And I often find myself as the tenured council member here. I try not to get into history lessons, but, you know, for 10 years on council for, you know, and I appreciate Lisa, your comments today. We've done so much that I'm proud of in our city and have helped all members of our community throughout. And sometimes these sorts of events remind us in our community that that dark part of us as humans exists. And it happens and at those moments is when this council and we as the leaders of our community are reflecting, have to take notice. And it happens to the LGBT community during the Orlando, the Orlando shootings happen. Happened this past summer. It happened with the Latino community a few years ago because of the language being used at the federal level and children were afraid to come to YCCA food giveaways or whatever because they're afraid of the federal government waiting for them. There was a real fear in our community. Those are our neighbors. Those are our kids that we played Little League with. Those are our friends that sell Girl Scout cookies and whatever else they do in our community. And the parents that raise them and the grandparents that raise them are all our neighbors. And every time we do that, I'm proud to be on this council because every time we stand up. And this is one of those times. And we stand up for our neighbors, for Lisa, for you, for my colleagues on this council who have to endure those things. All of us have done it. As a Latino, my father and mother have endured that and their parents. And those aren't things that go away easily. Those aren't things that we ever forget, your partner. These are traumatic issues that harken back to a darker time and remind us again of our humanness and the darkness that comes with it at times. And this is the time when we stand up. And I will say this too, to those who think that this language is all right, to those that may be fearful of it. We have your back. We take the stand today knowing that we absolutely condemn these actions, the words, the hurtful words and everything else that goes along with this. There's no stronger condemnation I can give of it. It's, it is absolutely something that the city does not, does not at all condone. And I hope everybody can look at each other as neighbors and part of our community and treat each other with the respect and inclusiveness that they deserve. So to our neighbors, I hope you can rest easy. The work is not done and the work is in all of us and all those that called in and all those are listening. This isn't what four members of the city council can do. It's what ways a community can do, and it will take each one of us to help combat it. So strongly support this resolution. Again, thank you to our colleagues who brought this forward. And thank you to those and Lisa especially who came forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Ladesma. And also just want to thank Dr. Pan, who I reached out to and informed him about our resolution. And he also has been pushing to secure funding and support for our community to address the racist and xenophobic behavior towards our AAPI community. So that's a big, big plus in support for our community who is about 11.8% total of West Sacramento, which is about 10.7% Asian and 1.1% Native American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander. So out of 11.8% of our community that could be impacted, we want to be able to protect you and provide the support. And as our mayor Potem said, we have your back and just work in partnership with all of our electeds to speak up against this and do what we can to provide the resources. And even as our Commissioner Thirical requested, to take a look at supporting legislation where people can call in and report or seek support when needed for such activities that happen to them. And with that, I'm gonna accept a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I want the motion to, the recommended actions are to accept the consent agenda.
I would second.
Thank you. Mayor Potem moves and Councilmember Orozco seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Alcala.
I think she had an emergency. Why don't we come back to her?
Okay. Mayor Potem Ladesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
Is Councilmember Cala back? That's three ayes, the motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to our time set agenda item number 11, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 21-14, establishing fees for micro mobility and a second reading and adoption of ordinance 21-2, amending titles five, business licenses and regulation of the municipal code relating to micro mobility operation. And I think we have Ms. Strand to present on this item.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you this evening is a public hearing to consider Resolution 2114, amending the book of fees to establish rates for the micro mobility operations permitting program as well as the second reading of ordinance 2102, amending title five of the municipal code. And these items before you this evening are consistent with the first reading of the ordinance as well as the workshop that was conducted with city council on February 3rd. And there have been no additions or changes to the content of the resolution or ordinance since then. So at this time, staff respectfully requests that the city council conduct a public hearing and following the hearing, adopt Resolution 2114 as well as waive the second reading, read by title and number only, and adopt ordinance 2102. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Strand. Bring it back to council for any questions. No questions? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Are there any requests for public comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, we have Danny Thirical.
Okay. Of course, Commissioner Thirical, please, you have an opportunity to speak now.
Hello, I just wanted to bring two, I guess, questions or maybe concerns that I have when I read this resolution. One is just a quick answer is probably no, but I wanted to ask just to clarify these increased in fees. Will they infect the service charge that riders will incur? Like, will the fees be offset to the consumers essentially? I assumed it would be no, but I wanted to ask and clarify to make sure. And then the second part was the, I believe, number six on the resolution of the changes that allows the discretion to the city manager. I can see that it's meant as an incentive essentially or as a way to get the micro mobility programs to focus areas, specific areas into the city. But I wonder if there's any kind of guarantee that we can have those things placed in those specific communities or is it just this being used as an incentive?
Sure. So I agree with both of your questions. One, we don't, we do not anticipate any impact to the rates that are charged to consumers across the four micro mobility operators in our city as a result of our fees. Big picture, our fees are actually very, very modest and the proposed increases are even more modest. We only charge fees to recover the cost to the city to manage the permitting program. And we did pretty significant outreach with all of the operators in advance to make sure that they would be comfortable with those changes that we're proposing as well. On your second question, related, I apologize. Can you just refresh my memory on the second question?
Yeah, so if, so going to the resolution itself, number six, I believe.
Oh, the fee forgiveness program. Sorry. Okay. I apologize. Yeah, on the fee forgiveness program, the way that that is constructed is that in order to be eligible to participate in that program, an operator would need to opt in and then collaborate with the city on a deployment plan that would commit them to deploy devices at those locations that we agree upon and approve before they are eligible to receive those incentives. And it would also be broken out quarterly such that if we find that they are out of compliance in keeping devices deployed at those locations, that they wouldn't get all 1,500 upfront. We would be able to penalize the operator for falling out of compliance with that deployment plan. I hope that answers your question.
It does. But if we could just a quick follow up, does, is there any guarantees if they don't enter into the program? I mean, what's stopping them from not servicing specific areas in the city and only focusing on areas where there's high rider turnout?
Just also, Sarah, for just a second, we will take, we don't normally do exchange back and forth. We accept public comment for three minutes and then we close it and bring it back to council.
Apologize.
Okay, thank you. So I think, so we can, so I think, are you done now, Danny? But I think you've.
Yeah, I'm done. That was, that was pretty much it.
Okay, great. Thank you. So are there any other comments to speak, Madam Clerk?
No more speakers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll close the public comment and bring it back to council. And Sarah, I'm sorry, you can go ahead. I'm sorry for interrupting you. You can go ahead and try to answer the question. I don't know if you got the question. Okay, but.
Sure. Yeah, so we do not have specific requirements. And I'm happy to meet with you offline and discuss this as well in more depth as well as we can bring this back to a TMI commission meeting. However, we have two situations going on. There are a percentage requirement of devices that do need to be deployed in equity areas for Lime, who operates the jump program as part of our SECOG regional bike share agreement. But for our other operators, we do not currently have a percentage requirement for deployment because we've started to find that there's actually a lot of nuanced challenges in focusing only on geographic distribution of devices. And currently in West Sacramento, we just aren't seeing it as an issue. The deployment of devices by the existing operators is fairly largely overlapping with our equity areas. And the highest use is occurring in a lot of those areas as well. This is definitely something that in terms of performance monitoring, we can come back to both the TMI commission and the council when we discuss performance and consider if there are additional metrics that we would like to impose on operators. But that's the current status of where we're at.
Thank you, Sarah. And are there any questions from any council members at this point?
Who is this going to be a comment? I'm sorry, if I got a mayor. Yeah, no, and Sarah, again, thanks for, I know you've been very visible to us the last month or two on these issues. And it's always good to see you because you always do such a thorough job. And in the workshop, you sort of laid some of this out and we discussed kind of how the micro mobility has rolled out. Because it's your, what you just stated is something I've observed, is that it tends to work in our city in very unique ways, I think, in reaching parts of our city that are, that are mobility, that had been mobility deserts or, or kind of void. And so that's the benefit of these is that they have that kind of reach. And so again, it is something I think that I bookmark and make sure as we kind of begin to open up and watch. It is, it is something, one of the core reasons why we wanted these modes because we wanted to make sure communities that don't have the access to mobility via car or whatever, they have these other options. So I do support that concept. And so unless there's any other questions or comments, I'm happy to make a motion, move this forward. But I'll wait for the mayor to.
Sure. Councilmember Orozco? You have a question or comment? You have your mic up. I was wondering if that was your cue.
So sorry, Madam Mayor, if you're talking to me, I'm sorry, my internet keeps freezing and so I'm only getting scattered comments. I am just to offer a second to the mayor Potem, unless there's other discussion.
Just a, just a quick question. I know it was Commissioner Thirical who was asking questions, Sarah. And just briefly, just wanted to, for the purpose of sharing with the public, the process, I'm going over this with the public in the past, what that was like. I know with COVID, it was a little different. But I just wanted for public, just for the public to know, because I know Commissioner Thirical was asking questions about, about the, about the background a little bit. But just to share what the public process or the review of this had been briefly, if you can share that with us.
Sorry, just for clarification, are you asking me to just give a brief summary of the process specific to this resolution and ordinance update?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, I thought you meant the whole system at first. Yeah, so when the micro mobility permitting program was first established in 2019, it was, it's still a very new and emerging industry. And so we were not sure if the fees that we were going to set would cover or exceed the amount that we actually needed to recoup, to recover our costs. So the intent was always to revisit the initial ordinance as cities across the country were developing these ordinances for the first time and determine if there was any improvements or changes that we would need to make to both adjust the fee, to make sure that we were recovering all costs to administer the program, as well as to just adjust as industry standards began to emerge. So that includes things like shifting from a per device to a per trip fee and introducing these more novel programs that are specific to our region and our city, such as the discretionary bike share fee waiver in support of our regional bike share program as well as the fee forgiveness program, which just creates more leverage for the city to actually have a say in where some of these devices go as opposed to being purely subject to the whims of the industry. And so we did conduct a workshop with city council on February 3rd, discussing all of the proposed changes. And at that time, we conducted the first reading of the ordinance 2101 and presented the content of the changes that are proposed here tonight with the first reading, or sorry, the public hearing for Resolution 2114. And so we're here tonight after having discussed and received council's full support for the proposed changes to get the full adoption of these items this evening.
Thank you, Sarah. And just because I know you're very thorough and you do a great job in analyzing, you know, this particular program here in West Sacramento, which has been very successful. And I know what we've been wanting to do is expand it because it's pretty effective in getting people around. And you've been just making sure that it's done properly here in the city and receiving all the feedback, not just, you know, now presently, but over the course of the time it's been here implemented in the city. And so just with that, I just wanted to share that for the public to know that this didn't happen over, over a period of two months, that it was quite a process. And ever since the beginning, this was part of the process to take into consideration some factors over the course of the implementation and our own personal experience as a city. And so moving forward, this is very helpful to have back to us and your recommendations, which is why we are adopting the Resolution 21-14 here, which I'll, you know, now that council member I'll call, I know you had an emergency, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak on this item if you have any comments or questions. We do have a motion and a second here for it to be moved if you just want to give you an opportunity to speak if you have any questions.
I just want to thank everyone who spoke so eloquently on this resolution. I apologize. My mother is elderly. She took a slip, so I had to miss a bit of this conversation. I just, when I hear these stories, I heard, I've heard my fellow board member Jackie Wong two years ago talking about the hurt her child felt even before, you know, this horrible hate-filled, I'm sorry.
Hello, we're on, we're on item number 11, which is.
I am so sorry. I thought we were still on. I apologize. I apologize. But I didn't have an opportunity to vote, so let me just say this. I want to vote yes on the resolution that council member Orozco presented. And I am trying to orient again. I'm sorry, Mayor. Where are we?
We already approved the consent agenda, so we've gone past that and we are now on item number 11.
Okay, I apologize. I have to, I have to look at this real quickly. One moment. Sorry. No, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, council member. I'll call. And so we'll, you know, ask for Madam Clerk to call the roll. call the roll.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Putan Vedasma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you. And next we'll move to our regular agenda item number twelve, a presentation and discussion of the status of the draft storm drainage and storm water master plan. And I believe we have Mr. Robinson here today.
Evening. I'm going to introduce the item and then I'll turn it over to Senior Civil Engineer Candido Ramirez to do the presentation and take the council's questions. I'm John Robinson. I'm Deputy City Manager and Interim Community Development Director. Since we have an engineer present, I'm going to keep my comments at a layperson's level and Candido's responsibility would be to clean up whatever errors I may make in my presentation. Hopefully, there won't be many. Fundamentally, there's two kinds of flooding risk that the city is exposed to. External, which is water coming over through or under the levee system from the river and internal flooding, which happens when the city's stormwater drainage system can't move the amount of water out that it needs to, and it backs up and creates localized flooding problems. Dealing with the risk of external flooding has been a city priority for years, and I think both the council and the community are familiar with the terrain there. But the potential for internal flooding has received less attention over the years for a number of different reasons. And so part of the the intent of the report tonight is to bring that issue before the before the council and and begin the a conversation that will lead to a stormwater and drainage master plan and a financing plan to associate with that for those improvements. The council is not being asked to make any decisions this evening, and there's no expectation that the council absorb every bit of data in this very, very detailed report. Our intent is to continue building the council's and the community's level of comfort with this subject matter and better create background knowledge on the issue of internal flooding in order to facilitate future discussions where the decisions will need to be made about how to prioritize and pay for stormwater improvements. So Candido will walk you through our report tonight. And going forwards, we can to continue this dialogue, we're happy to come back with additional workshops or similar presentations or to meet individually with council members to brief you on this subject. So with that, I'll hand it over to Candido.
Good evening, Mayor Guerrero and council members. First of all, I need to let you know that my connection is a little chop choppy. So I apologize if you miss any any information. But here we go. I'm here to provide an update on the storm drainage and stormwater master plan, which has been underway for at least three years. And we have reached a point where it's it's in draft. It's in the draft form and the next step is to finalize it. And soon after that, begin a financing plan and eventually implementation plan. So the subsequent steps will take a while to 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 complete. But we're taking baby steps. So again, like John mentioned, this is for information only. And I'll try to be as clear as possible. Today's goal is to inform you of of numerous areas, numerous areas, excuse me, in the city are subject to localized flooding, localized internal flooding, excuse me. And the report has identified infrastructure deficiencies throughout the city and but predominantly on the north side, north of the ship channel. The report also has identified potential mitigation solutions. And it also provides a preliminary budget cost estimates to implement some projects. This exhibit that you see here is a good graphic, I think, that explains why we are, why the situation is is what it is with the city, city stormwater. On the left hand side of this graphic, you can see that in a natural state, rainwater is absorbed by a pervious soil, undeveloped soil, and in some of the runoff that is not absorbed by the previous soil, eventually runs into a stream, river and or lake. On the right hand side is what we have with development. The pervious surface decreases and the impervious surface, which are rooftops, sidewalks, roads, they increase. And when imperviousness increases, rainwater runs off faster. And it's it needs to be mitigated somehow when it gets to to the next to the next point. And the way it's mitigated is by constructing large diameter pipes, canals or basins, lakes. And that helps to to manage that runoff and hopefully minimize flooding to to homes and businesses. So what I just described for the right hand side is is what happened for the north north part of the city, but before the city was incorporated. But the only problem that the only only part that didn't occur was proper mitigation. So as a result, there are a lot of lot of numerous flooding areas in the North Basin. The South Basin, which is mostly the South Port area, was master planned and 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 therefore we have less issues on the South Basin. And I think I just, I'm going to repeat what I just said, but basically this map on the right hand side defines the North Basin and South Basin for for those those who may not be entirely familiar with with the city. And again, on the North Basin, there was no master plan done prior to to city incorporation. Most of the infrastructure was undersized, and therefore there is higher probability of flooding. Unfortunately, also in the North Basin, it lacks operation and maintenance and also capital funding mechanisms. The South Basin was master planned and therefore a lot of the infrastructure is properly sized and it has less probability of flooding. And another positive with the South Basin is that it does have some funding mechanisms to build and to maintain that infrastructure. This is another city map which shows basically all the city's infrastructure, infrastructure for stormwater. And I know it's it's tiny. I don't expect you to squint, you know, identify each piece. But the the purpose for this was to show that the city's internal drainage network is managed by at least five agencies, which are listed on the right hand side here. City of West Sacramento, Reclamation District nine hundred, Reclamation District five thirty seven, Caltrans and Washington Unified School District. The the first two are the predominant agencies responsible for for stormwater. And more specifically, the the city owns most of the smaller drainage components, which are the the catch basins or drainage inlets and also the small, the pipe systems. RD nine hundred, for the most part, owns a lot of the lakes that you see throughout the city, the canals and ditches and also the pump stations. So the the modeling that was done for the report identified areas that could potentially flood based on the existing infrastructure. This this modeling assumes that all the infrastructure is well maintained and there's it's cleaned, there are no no backups. And so if if pipes, for example, were not cleaned and not maintained, this model would look even worse. I'll just be honest with you. The the blue shaded areas that you see here are, and this one here that I'm pointing to on top here is Bright on the north side, another one near Broadrick and State Streets. So there's several pockets throughout the city. Those essentially, based on modeling, they would using a one hundred year two hour storm. These could potentially flood up to three feet. So that's, I think that's that was surprising, but that's that's what the model shows and 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 because of that, the report then continued to identify ways to try to mitigate this flooding. I'll come back to that exhibit in a second here. In fact, let me go back there right now. So I'm going to give you an example of so these areas are are belong to different drainage systems throughout the city. The one of the drainage systems that would discharge stormwater runoff for this first pocket here, the Bright Bright Area Pocket. That system I'm about to show you in a second in these following slides. So this is that system discharges to the Sacramento weir, or some people call it the Tulley Canal, just just north of the CHP campus. And just so everybody's also oriented with this graphic here, here's IKEA. Here's Walmart, Home Depot, and there's Interstate eighty. So in order to mitigate flooding at Bright, the best approach and the most practical approach is to upgrade the system downstream first and then work your way up until you reach Bright Avenue. So if we were to do that, the the first piece of infrastructure that would need replacement or upgrade would be a pipe or a culvert that's underneath Interstate eighty. That particular location has a pipe that's seven and a half, that is seven and a half feet in diameter, which is about the height of most homes ceilings and homes. We would have to add in the, we would have to add another pipe, the same diameter at that location to so that water doesn't choke and back up at that location. We continue east at to Harbor, we would also have to upgrade that pipe and it would be another pipe similar in size. And I'm going to switch to the next exhibit, which is which is adjacent to this location here. In addition to those pipes, the existing canals along the railroad tracks, just north of the of the railroad tracks would have to be increased significantly, fifteen feet in width. And that's that's a substantial improvement. And if we if we continue going upstream, again, all these these pipes in red, red pipes would need to be upgraded. And I won't go into, I'll stop. I will stop discussing the the pipe diameters because they're all they're all there. But the the point is, we need to upgrade the downstream pipes and canals so that they have capacity to to discharge the runoff that's created in in the problematic areas, the areas that accumulate a lot of runoff. So that system alone that I just described is listed on this table here, and it has a cost of eight million dollars, seven point nine million dollars. So this this table here lists all the components that I just described. And and I won't go in through, I will not discuss the rest of the systems that are all in the in the report. So as you can see, this this table here lists the overall cost for to improve city stormwater system. Eight million dollars is a fraction of these one point or a hundred and fourteen million dollars. So so this table is broken down into two ways, that the top cells are for the North Basin, which total a hundred and seventy one million dollars. The bottom cells are for the South Basin, which are twenty four million dollars. And the other way to read this table here, these first cells or columns here on the left hand side are the city's cost, which are a hundred, would be a hundred and thirty four million dollars, a hundred and thirty five. And then next we have RD nine hundreds budget cost, which are over fifty fifty million dollars. Funding. Currently, what's currently unfunded are the North Bay, North Basin improvements. And also some South Basin improvements, which are not related to development. There are as a previous table showed, there are some improvements that would be needed for the South Basin. And we also don't have, we have minimal funding for citywide O and M. I believe if I recall correctly, the city currently budgets just under a billion dollars for for stormwater and storm drainage maintenance, which is a drop in the bucket, honestly. So the next step is for us to begin a financing study. Well, I'm sorry, first of all, finish this report. And then soon after that, hire a consultant to prepare financing and implementation study. They would look at the the results of this report and try to help us figure or develop impact fees or the funding mechanisms to to try to tackle these infrastructure needs. Let's see. So so I had this slide here. You know, we really, we're welcome to to take any input, but the first bullet here, I I left from a previous presentation, and that's because I did, there was a lot of focus on the on the tension basins and underground vaults. I can go to those those slides if necessary. And ranking the projects would also be helpful to get some feedback on. And again, it doesn't have to be tonight. It can be over after the meeting or whatever is convenient. I think the the most important feedback would be funding options or suggestions, ideas, because that's obviously the biggest hurdle. And so we're here in in March. Hopefully, we can finish the finalize the report within a month, but but I think it'll likely take a couple of months. And if necessary, we can return to the Commissions and City Council and and present the findings. And, uh, if necessary, we, we can return to the Commissions and City Council and, and present, uh, the findings, uh, especially if they are significant. If there are significant differences than, than what was presented today. And, um, at some point, we'll have to start, uh, community workshops and public outreach. I think that's it.
Thank you, um, Candido. Appreciate the presentation. And, uh, quite, quite a lot of information to take in, um, and you have some substantive, uh, requests back for information from council, which I think I will take you up on your advice to, um, come back and, and, provide you with additional comments. Um, want to open it up to council to see if they have any questions or comments? I'm sorry, and I can't see you. Um, here we go. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I've come a long way with storm drains, um, and Candido knows, uh, and John Robinson know that, uh, it's been kind of a love-hate relationship. Uh, there's so many wonderful things we have to think about and decide to, uh, make decisions about as a council. And, um, for me, storm drains were not the sexiest, uh, subject, but, um, you, you know, over the last several years, I recognize the importance of our need to address this. And, and, and according to the council report, this, this matter hasn't been, um, really been at a priority uh, for the last decade or more. And, you know, year after year, when we need as a council to discuss what our annual priorities are, one of the top, if not the most important priority is named as flood control. And I think, you know, even the way it's taught during flood week, and we talk about the water coming over the levee, or we talk about seepage that would cause a breach that would, you know, cause a levee to fail, and then we would be underwater. We're all afraid of it, but, you know, it's part of the public safety that we, we, um, have pledged to follow through, uh, to maintain. But I, I think that this threat is a quiet threat, and it's, but it's also very real. Um, you know, um, talking about impervious surfaces, um, and, and how we didn't ever anticipate being at a place where we're fifty-five thousand and growing, and we're probably even a lot more than that. Once the census numbers come out, we're, we're probably well beyond that. But, you know, when, when our little city was incorporated, or even before then, when these, these pipes and, um, the infrastructure was created to deal with stormwater, I don't know that it ever anticipated the growth we would experience. And maybe more so once we hit Southport, the development in Southport, we have a little bit more, uh, information at that point. But on the, with respect to the north side, from what I understand, we definitely need to augment and improve the infrastructure we have there, uh, because we are just well behind the amount of, um, you know, the number of people and the impervious surfaces that, that have, uh, rep, you know, mul- multiplied in, in the area. And essentially, um, you know, there, there are so many different things that we need to think about. We, we not only have to think about the control of excess runoff volume and velocity, but also just the quality of the water that's going into places like our wetlands and our rivers and our lakes. Because obviously, um, if they're running off of our impervious services, they're collecting bacteria and pollutants and, and other chemicals that, that might make the environment less healthy. Um, so, you know, we, we definitely want to ensure that we promote the groundwater, groundwater infiltration, so that way it cleans itself. Um, and then we also think about water quality. But with respect to this conversation, I, I, I understand that the gist of it is talking about the runoff volume and how it is that we can respond to it to ensure that our residents aren't trapped underwater or that their businesses or infrastructure aren't being damaged, lest we have a storm of all storms. And we just kind of had one, um, and obviously, we were tested by that, um, with respect to our, just our electricity and power. Um, but, you know, this is larger. This is, this is about, um, our storm drains being overflowing in our, uh, sewer systems and drainage dishes and, and, and all of the, uh, the muddiness and, and overflow um, and damage that we can, you know, we could suffer from. So, you know, I, I, in listening to this presentation, and thank you, Candido, so much for all of your preparation, um, you know, and, and in, in putting this all together for us. I, I know that there are a variety of different options. Um, I, you know, work near McKinley Park and sometimes take walks over there. And I know that they're putting in a very expensive underground vault to trap stormwater there, amongst other things. Um, and I know that we're not set up in the same fashion, um, necessarily, you know, to, to be able to afford an underground vault just yet. And I know these are very, that's a very expensive solution. In our last conversation, we talked about detention basins, and, um, I remarked that, uh, you know, it was kind of sneaky that Summerfield Park, all these years, my kids have been playing at Summerfield Park, and I get to sit on the little levee, I suppose it is, because it's a detention basin. It's depressed. And I never really considered that, you know, the kids are all run down there to go play, but it also doubles up as the overflow in case we were to ever suffer from, um, you know, a, a situation where we had excess runoff, or we had a breach of the levee. And then also the detention basin along Southport, which we've talked about, uh, frequently, uh, which is actually a wet detention basin and, and remains, um, wet, I think year-round, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but it is a detention basin to, to absorb the overflow there. So we talk about like channel widening and pipe replacement and the pump upgrades, um, and installation that you had mentioned. I, I, I do, you know, think that we have to make some decisions or at least signal to, you know, uh, when we can find these resources. Um, and again, these projects are expensive. And I said, I read in the report where you said that, um, if we pair them, that, that, there are not really a lot of grants for these types of projects, but if we pair them with other improvements, hypothetically speaking, like I'm thinking Bright Park or, or something to that effect. If we're doing an overhaul of Bright Park, um, could we find grant funding to do, I don't know, a detention basin or, or some kind of pipe widening so that we can ensure that, um, those improvements are being made? I would be all in support of that. Um, and, you know, you, you, we have to move forward to considering the financing, uh, before we get to that implementation. Because frankly, if there's not a lot of funding sources and the really, the only options we have are, you know, limited. Uh, and I understand that Southport has some, um, at least some semblance of a financing, uh, financing situation or, uh, mechanism. But, you know, um, on the north side, there, there doesn't appear to have that same, we don't have that, we're not similarly situated on the north side. But, you know, to the extent that we can find, um, the resources to address the issue, I would recommend focusing on the areas of greatest need. Um, and that is the aged, uh, areas in our community, and the map that you showed, um, whether it be north of the Barge Canal, um, and, and moving forward to focus on those underserved areas in the city. Um, again, I think that south of the Barge Canal, you know, where they were informed by more current population trends, and, and they anticipated the future needs a little bit better. And, you know, as, as mentioned, had some existing funding mechanisms. So I just don't want to leave, uh, an area, um, you know, at, at more risk, um, where we can, we can, uh, you know, at least prioritize the area. And, you know, and that said, I mean, it's not likely to say, okay, Candido, go buy a pipe, right? I mean, and from what I understand, you also need to have the place for once the water flows, it needs to flow into something. It will, lest it stay in that pipe, if the pipe was that big where it could just sit there and, and be standing water within the, the, the pipe. But, um, you know, this is complicated because, you know, it requires so much, and we don't have existing funds to address it, um, yet. And yet, I absolutely believe it's, um, it's important for us to start really thinking about this and how we're going to tackle this really important problem, because we might be afraid of those levee, levees breaching, which hopefully the, the fear will be removed once we get, um, our, um, our flood protection projects, um, finished. But that we still have this one, which is again, that sneaky and silent threat of just flooding from below. So, um, and that's the extent of my comments. Thank you so much for, for, uh, bringing this forward to us. Candido, it was an excellent presentation, and I appreciate the slides.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. Uh, any other comments from our council members? Councilmember, I'll call him.
Thank you. Uh, I've always been concerned about flooding in this area, because I remember when I was a young girl back in nineteen sixties, especially around the, um, it was the Third and Seventh Street area. We had friends that lived there, and I remember when it would rain, um, this wasn't even flooding. It would, um, basically come up about a foot, and many of the people there had to, you know, had to leave those areas. Um, I don't know very much about engineering. One of my sons is a water engineer, though. And, um, I understand that if we, you know, run into these problems, it will, um, possibly cause, um, damage first to our north side, and then, I guess if it ebbs, there would actually be deeper flooding, uh, going towards Southport because of the levees over there. So I'm glad that we're addressing that. It's not always the, um, sexiest thing on a city council agenda. I mean, we'd like to see new buildings. We'd like to see improvements made structurally where we can, you know, our, our optics catch it. But these are really important things. Foundations are so important. I think you've made some very important points. And I'm very much looking forward to getting, um, more of a report back in terms of priorities. I know we have great grant writers on our city council, and I really invite people who are, um, listening in to our city council meetings to make recommendations also, and to please provide us with your feedback. That's really important. You know, that's how we are going to advance the city, and some of our best ideas, I think all the council members here would agree. We get them, you know, from our public. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll call it. Council, Mayor Bertinla Desma.
Thank you. And, uh, Candido, thank you very much for the update and, and the overview of the plan. It, no, it's not sexy for the sun. I, I kind of dug into this a little bit and the nerdy side of me, but, but this has been a vaccine problem since we started talking with you guys about it a couple of years ago, right? Three years ago? And you came back at it, uh, I think last year with an update. I want to say that was right. And, uh, yeah, it, it is one of these, these sneaky underground, uh, things that we, you know, when most of the growth was going on back when I was on planning commission in the two thousands, was all focused on Southport. And, um, like you said, it's, that was all master plan, thought of, built out of the, you know, fields of, of Southport, and so you can build that infrastructure. Um, the north has always been, north of the canal has always been, um, as you're illustrating on the screen right now, the problem. But the bigger problem here is the one we're all not getting to is is funding. Um, and then, and that's just one where, where, um, it, it just because nobody thinks of this. Um, and I don't, I'm not saying this council, no state, uh, the state isn't. Um, at least, uh, I think, um, our mayor could probably give it. I'll tell you, I don't think there's any major stormwater drainage system legislation, grant funding, um, mechanism being built. Um, the feds, it remains to be seen. And, and I kind of want to start with that. Um, because I, I think at the last time you were on council, or this came up, um, the then, a then, uh, presidential candidate that I ended up supporting is now the Secretary of Transportation, talked about this very issue on the campaign trail. That this, this is a fundamental foundational issue in cities across the country. And, um, and it is not recognized as that, for the amount of, of risk that cities have. Um, this, this, this basic piece of infrastructure is one that the, the, I dare to say, least, uh, recognize areas where you can, we can go out and get grant funding for this uh, at the federal level, state level, um, and, and either. And, uh, that's why it hasn't, it hasn't been a priority for anybody. And, and so if we can't fund it, well, you know, it's, 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 it's hard to make it a priority. But I'm gonna, I'm not gonna kind of draw into that, because that's, what, what, what matters is, is that we're here. And that same, like I said, that same, the new administration, including that, that then presidential candidate is now the Secretary of Transportation, talking big about infrastructure, uh, as is this entire administration. And, um, I think the part that you, I, I, there's an old journalism term, you bury the lead. You bury the lead here in terms of the funding and hundred and seventy-nine million, I think it was, hundred and seventy-one million, for one, just the North Basin, its own hundred and ninety, uh, four, for the entire, for, um, the entire, um, city of kind of estimated cost. We're not going to be able to, to do that all at one time. That money's just not, it's just not going to be there. But we, we've got to be ready for the opportunities that may come. Um, and I think that's, um, the mode. If it's anything like what was in two thousand ten, when I got on council, and right before that, as we were coming out of the recession. If, if we get to that mode as a federal government, where they're going to help cities, help, um, you know, ar- areas of, uh, to address the aged infrastructure in this country, we've got to be ready for it. Having this plan in place is going to be critical. And more importantly, is having a strategic view of it, of, of kind of where, what, as you're kind of pointing out, where our priorities are, right? Um, and I think you, you've already identified them. If I looked at your, uh, challenges, implementation, you have a ranking, you kind of classify, uh, group assignments of, of rank by A, B, and C, which I think is you're saying is A, um, is the A group is one where, um, we, we want to concentrate first, it is because of your criteria you, uh, put together, you, that's probably where we need to concentrate in those areas. I'm starting looking at your report. You just grouped the As together was, uh, Hobson at Bright, uh, Hobson, Arthur Drive, Douglas and Elkhorn. So you, you have all the right areas. You have highlighted, right? That's, that's the priority. And, and what I would, my direction on this is if that's, and it, you know, that's the priority, then we, we need to be ready, um, because we know there's so much more, more work to be done, whether it's the engineering work, um, uh, the, the pre-work that will be ready. And I'm, I'm just, when we get to these discussions about funding, if it's anything like it was ten years ago, the term shovel-ready needs to come to mind. We need to be ready to jump on the, any opportunities that come uh, to fund this. Yes, we need to look at our own funding, and, and I know I'm circling the EIFD or other opportunities we may, mechanism we may have for this type of infrastructure, but you know, that, that's only going to get us so far. And, um, so I think you're, you had the right idea about how to prioritize. I would, I think, uh, Councilmember Roscoe brought up a really good point, uh, that you might want to think about adding a layer to this, um, in terms of prioritization, is those projects where there's other leverageable projects to pull money together, right? So I'm just going to use the As again. If we, if you were to add in a layer of, we're also looking at funding for Bright Park, or we're also looking for funding for road renovations in West Capital, whatever, where it might help us get to some of the, some of the preceding sequencing you need for that, those piping, right? Um, that would add to kind of, this is, this is the project. It starts of, I think it might provide a more strategic view with that, that project where we could start and, and leverage funds. So again, it's just my, I, I thought, I thought kind of along the same lines. I mean, there's never going to be a, a leverageable project over on the east side of River Point, IKEA, because that's just pure, uh, I think that's what you're articulating, that, that first piece of, uh, of, uh, box covert, you need to go under I eighty, and the pipe you need to have, they need to expand that. It's going to be hard to find in, anything leverageable. Uh, but as you get closer into the urbanized, um, developed areas, you might. So again, it's a thought about how to proceed, and, and I think that's where my, um, recommendation is, is really zero in where, um, we can, you know, the big plan, putting it together, yes. Um, we need to get it done. Uh, but I think we, if there's opportunities to kind of further some projects so that we're ready, so it should, should opportunities come at the federal or state level, then yes, too, because you got to remember that, that the federal government's also not just worried about infrastructure, they're worried about climate change. And that will be a big issue. Community resiliency will be a big issue as part of that as well. Um, because if we're expecting more rainfall, less snowpack, this is where this ends up. It won't be the snowfall melting over on our levees anymore. It'll be sustained rainfall, and you're just pointed out that our And you just pointed out that our, some of our infrastructure may not be able to take it. So that's another kind of area where I'm sort of, again, certainly, we've got to be really strategic, ready, targeted to take advantage of opportunities. We, because if we try to bite it all off, we're never going to get there. And that's what's maybe slowed us down in the past. So I don't know if I have any more comments on that. I just kind of circling, I circled the river road time. I get we want to do the whole plan, but I'm just, I don't, I don't want to see an implementation kind of the best is the enemy, the good. We got to be good enough to be able to jump on opportunities and not have the best plan. We just got to be ready. So I'll stop there. I think those are my comments. But really good job. Thank you for bringing us.
Thank you, Mayor Bertinla-Desma. Councilmember, I'll call.
I did have a question, and I didn't see it on here. Do we have any natural aquifers here in, in West Sacramento where we could have storage for that stormwater?
Natural aquifers? I'm trying to think of, other than the Ship Channel.
Is that the only one?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think that's, that's the only one I could think of. Ship Channel, Stone Lake area. When you said aquifer, I was thinking, this was manmade. This is basically mitigating.
I'm talking about natural, natural aquifers.
Yeah, I can't think of any right now. I'm sorry.
Okay.
If I could help out, yeah, I mean, Candido's right. I think the only one is when we think about the middle of the city, there are remnants of Lake Washington. Lake Washington used to be a connected lake long before the Port Channel was, was dug and ultimately divided that system up. But yeah, that is, that is the one that we have in the city.
That's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to allow our city manager to speak a little bit on this.
Thank you, Mayor. First, first off, well, I want to give the bad news that at the moment, anyway, I can tell you there is no federal funding or state funding for stormwater drainage. I'm afraid maybe it's ribbon cuttings for pump stations are a little less exciting than ribbon cuttings for things like highways and stuff like that. But it doesn't lessen the importance, and that's why we're here. I want to first thank Candido, Wendy Williams before him, who recently retired and is still helping us out with this, Mark Collier and John Robinson for advancing this item to this point. What we're, we're hoping, and I think we're definitely seeing with the council for the purpose of this item, is to start to make a paradigm shift in the way we think about storm drainage from both a maintenance standpoint, but also from a capital investment strategy. And we really should be thinking about it as a critical piece of our infrastructure, much like we do with roads and water and sewer. And, you know, you all alluded to the reasons why it's taken this long. But we know that we have to be creative about our approach to this. And you all alluded to some of the, the funding challenges. And we'll, we'll need to be thinking about how, when we do storm drain improvements, I'm sorry, when we do other projects like roads or other infrastructure, how we can incorporate storm drain improvements as well on a piece-by-piece basis. Just like when we build a new road, we think of putting in broadband infrastructure for high-speed internet. So there's obviously lots of work to do here. We have a really good team on staff to get us there. And I would definitely encourage individual council members to reach out to me to schedule meetings with Candido and our other staff to learn more about this. We'll be coming back to you as Candido presented with more, including a financing strategy. We don't have all those answers right now, but, but it's encouraging the staff that, you know, this is something that clearly the council is understanding the importance of. So lots of work to follow. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I do want to bring it back for public comment. I don't know if there's any, any request for public comment, Madam Clerk.
There are no speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Close the public comment and bring it back to council. Kind of to end, everybody that has been working on this over the years, this is a major undertaking to understand, you know, our infrastructure, you know, as far as our storm drainage and stormwater master plan being developed here today, which really helps us on council to dive in and take a closer look on, on our city's underground infrastructure. And I think when you shared that one photograph, which you, which you kept up for a while, which is where the flooding would happen, you know, it's a very scary, you know, thought to see that, you know, I know there are many families, schools, elderly people. You know, there are, I think, residential programs out there for people that are disabled. And for an event to happen out there, and, you know, I know it can happen any, any day with the, you know, that's why we're doing climate change, you know, activities. So to prevent that from happening in the future. But for now, we're kind of like in a situation where, you know, we have, we have some very heavy storms. And so that's one of my biggest worries is here in West Sacramento, that I see the potential of causing, you know, a catastrophic event. And as we've seen, you know, our, our other infrastructure, which is like our power lines are very delicate. Any, any windstorm, they get knocked down. And so that combined with the rain and, you know, the flood, I can't, I can't imagine what kind of situation we would end up in. And it would overwhelm the city. With that, I am thinking in prioritization, which areas would be the hardest hit? And which, you know, is a combination, I think, looking at our oldest infrastructure areas. If we were in a storm, if we could prevent things from happening, you know, to take a look at prioritizing areas that are our weakest as far as a combination of factors and the most populous and those that have like school sites. So, you know, looking at the map is to those areas that would be flooded the most. And I would like to spend a little more time understanding that. I think we have a little bit of understanding when we, way back, I remember on the Economic Development Advisory Commission, we did an assessment of our power lines here in the city. And, and we looked at ours, our delicate, you know, power infrastructure, which is why we're not surprised that the state streets, for example, always lose their power in any windstorm. And this time, this last time, I think, just seeing that it just grew significantly. So it's just an indication that our, you know, PG&E system is not being taken care of. And so it's really falling on us as a city to address and looking at what we need to do with the stormwater master plan and building on a combination of factors that we need to take care of in the future. I know we're going to be having some conversations in our strategic planning retreat on some of these things. And so in order for us to have a safer, you know, powers, electrical system moving forward, it would be to do some undergrounding. So, you know, moving forward, I'd like to see how to combine the two, you know, for a stormwater master plan and combining the two activities. And then we also have a very, you know, terrible broadband system. So looking at what we can do to expand on that. So those, those are some of the infrastructure needs that I've been looking to see what we can accomplish in moving forward to strengthen. And I think in bringing all of these, you know, we may not have any federal funding for this, but we may be able to get federal funding for other infrastructure areas where we can combine those resources, but also prioritize areas of our city that are most challenged in, as far as an infrastructure setting. And so I, I, you know, have actually toured, you know, sometime last year when COVID was not, the year before, sorry, 2018. And I did get a chance to take a look at this and get a presentation by Tim. So I'd like to be able to figure out how to do that at some point again in doing a tour and maybe just give me some, some tips, what I can do to learn, you know, so that I can physically take a look at these locations. And it'll help me to understand, you know, where our biggest challenges are at, maybe just kind of pointing a couple of streets or whatever so that I can, I can tour them. And, you know, just some of the other things I've heard canvassing. Some, this is, this is an area where I've heard, you know, constituents complain that they want that flood for every rainfall that happens in front of their home to, to be eliminated. And so that's, that's just regular rain. I don't even think, I don't think, I don't know if they report it, but they do ask, hey, can you get rid of this huge flood? But we can't. I mean, we just, you know, it's not an easy fix. So, I mean, I can go back and say that. I can, I can show them the plan. I can say, hey, look at, this is what we need to do, but we just don't have the money. And it's going to really take some, some plan on behalf of city council to take a look at some long-term funding strategies, which we're not discussing tonight exactly. But we do have the cost estimate, which is very helpful. And this questions on, if we don't fix it now, how much can the cost increase over a period of time? So if it's, you know, 10 million now, could it be 30 million five years from now? So are those, do those costs compound over time? And just kind of get a sense if that is equally citywide or if it's based on certain areas that we can take on first and then fix so that we don't have to have a compounded cost in the future. And other things I'd like to take into consideration are ways to, you know, address a crisis. And it doesn't have to be here. But seeing, you know, that one chart that you showed where there's a flood and seeing what happened in the last power failure, I, you know, I do want to improve in the future, you know, between now and when all this is fixed, which is, I think, quite a few years away, to help our community get the resources and, you know, to be able to reach out to others if they're in need of support for an emergency. Because I, as, as I anticipate, you know, many of the people that are living in these communities are elderly and are going to, are going to grow old. I mean, I mean, it may be me living out there, you know? And so I, you know, want to be able to, won't have a phone, power lines are down. You know, it's just going to be rough for people. So just figuring out in the future ways to provide support for residents who are going to be caught in a crisis situation like that and to get them the support they need from the city and all, you know, and the county resources and others from the state. So to prepare a plan for that. It was, it was quite challenging when the power failure happened. And I can't imagine with the flood what our situation would look like to step in and provide support for the individuals that would be experiencing, you know, that situation. So with that, I would like to take more time to explore this further and, you know, understand the mapping and, you know, we'll take you up on that offer, Erin, to sit down with staff to go over this a little more with you. And also recommend, we have a, a new, I think you presented this before. I'm kind of getting on in the commission, the infrastructure commission. I believe I spoke to one of the commissioners in the past who said that they received a presentation about this. So I don't, we have new commissioners if we can provide them with the presentation again, as you suggested early on, so that they can also provide additional feedback. And just to, just Councilmember, I'll call.
I, I just had a really quick question, actually a comment. What I would like to also find out is how much we're getting from, how much funding we're actually getting from different programs like the Hazard Mitigation Program. I know they have funds available, federal funding available. So I'd just like to get of what we're getting in terms of federal funds and how much it's, just every phase is going to cost. If you could break it down, that would help me also figure out, you know, what areas we should be prioritizing.
Thank you.
Can I get a little bit more direction on that? The, which, which funding source are we talking about there?
I was talking about federal funding because I know there are things like the Hazard Mitigation Fund program. They have, they have monies available for things just like this. And I think there are other federal programs out there. So I'm just, Erin, I'm sorry, I have the gallery, so couldn't see you.
Oh, yeah, no, it's fine. I just wanted to be clear about, so federal funding in general, yeah, we can, we can address that together when we, yeah.
Yeah, and, and what I'm saying is, I just want to see how much is coming in. I know that Gondillo has areas that he's recommending that, you know, need attention first. This way, it gives some sort of a work matrix for us, you know, and a timeline. So we know what we're dealing with. That would be helpful for me.
Okay, yeah, I think we know the, the source of funding you're talking about. And just in general, right now for storm drain funding, we don't get any funding directly from the federal or state government. This is something that we're funding locally and then also through RD900. RD900 owns some of the system. That's part of the, the complexity of it. They have parts of the system they maintain, we maintain other parts. But we can, the, the funding source you're talking about, we'll, we'll look into that and let you know.
I think it does cover it. It's called the Hazard Mitigation Fund, or Program, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember, I'll call. And just for the suggestion of taking a look at combining, you know, this project with other projects. If I could understand during, you know, the time that we spent together, breaking out what the different costs are for that you've outlined here under the estimated amounts, if it is, you know, for tearing up the street or tearing up, you know, the ground and then, you know, for the, you know, for the supplies and, you know, just the time. I mean, is it, is it for everything or is it just for a component? So I'll, I'll spend time to go over that a little more with you so I can find out how much, you know, each is, each area is costing, you know, as far as the expense. So with that, if there are any more comments among our council members? No? All right. Thank you so much, everybody, for all your help on this. And greatly appreciate it. Look forward to spending some more time discussing it with you. Okay, thank you, Gavida. All right. Anything else from staff about this?
No, thank you. That was, that was a helpful start to the master plan process. And like I said, we'll be following up with a lot more. And again, I'll invite council to reach out to me for individual meetings with the staff about this to learn more. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda is council calendar.
Good evening. No report for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is city manager report?
No reports on it, thank you.
And I think you have updated dates for our strategic planning retreat, which you circulated with everybody.
Yes, we have. I believe we've confirmed 100% at this point that we'll be doing that in April, April 15, 16, 17. And we don't have the agenda in hours set yet, but those are the dates. So thank you for your flexibility and making yourselves available for that. And I look forward to it. And we'll get you more information as we get more things set. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And city attorney report?
Thank you for tonight.
All right, thank you. And staff direction from city council members? Yep. All right. And any future agenda item requests by council? I think that's a, I have a question for the city manager on this.
Yes.
Okay, so on the future agenda item request by council, are those supposed to be presented in writing and then submitted in the packet in writing for council members to review? I'm trying to remember.
So this goes back to your council procedures manual. And the process outlined in that manual states that if you have an item that you'd like the council to consider for a future agenda, and that goes for really anything, you would send, it says send a memo to me. I interpret that to mean you may send me an email with it. And it's, and it's more about the content of that point. It's the description of the item and some details about what it is and what you'd like to accomplish there. What we do from there is we'll put it on the agenda as a one-line item on this, this agenda item. And we'll, we'll attach the accompanying email and any background materials. And then the council would then ask, you know, me if it's, if we have the bandwidth on staff to bring this back. And then you're supposed to actually vote on putting the item on the agenda. That's all the vote is for. It's not on the item itself. It's to bring it forward on a future agenda. So that's, that's a reminder of the process in your manual. And that's what we'll, we'll be following, we'll be trying to follow going forward. So thanks for asking about that clarification.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, may I say something? I'm sorry. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Mayor Guerrero, for bringing that resolution forward and raising awareness in West Sacramento of the alarming trend of this hate-fueled attack against Asian Americans. One of the reasons I support ethnic studies so strongly is because I believe
One of the reasons I support ethnic studies so strongly is because I believe, you know, when our children begin to learn and understand, they. They appreciate the diversity in cultures. And I know our school board, you know, strongly supports ethnic studies. That is the only, I think. Thing we can really do to, to stop this horrible. I don't know what you would call it, this racially. Charged atmosphere that we've been having lately. If we can sit down with our children, teach them to appreciate. The diversity and the beauty and. Just really. I have, I have to say, have these conversations in earnest with them. That's one of the things I was going to mention, you know, Jackie, trustee Jackie Wong, and I often had. Very long conversations about where bullying came from. And it starts with parents not watching what their children are doing, you know, from a very young age. And then, you know, it escalates there. So I think bringing awareness is very important. And I want to thank you also for bringing many things to, to the attention, you know. Members in our community. But most importantly, you know, I want to say I had to leave. I have an emergency. And I would like to have myself recorded as supporting this resolution. So thank you for bringing this, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Callaghan. Is that your motion to adjourn in to show respect for our community?
Thank you so much. Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll accept a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mayor Protando. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Callaghan.
Aye.
Mayor Protando Desma.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Bye bye.